Okay, you have a report for us this evening?
I do, I have a couple before I introduce the stars of the evening sitting in the front row. Good evening, everyone. A couple of things this evening. First and foremost, Monday was a professional development day for our staff. And we're proud to report that our professional development day on Monday was truly a successful one. Our K-5 teachers had the opportunity to take part in Makerspace training. A Makerspace is a place where students are given a challenge and they need to create a solution. The goal is to work together to learn, to collaborate, and to share. Most importantly, Makerspace allows the children to explore, create new things, and improve things that already exist. This is something that our K-5 teachers have been working on to infuse into our curriculum. At the secondary level, the content supervisors work with their teachers to identify areas they needed to focus on. The topics addressed range anywhere from utilizing online resources to enhancing instruction, PLC work, and content team articulation opportunities, to name a few. We'll continue to differentiate our PD opportunities and look forward to starting to plan already for our professional development in January. So, big thanks to our administrators who are here this evening for planning those things and for the participation of our staff. Okay, we're set. My second report this evening is an announcement about the 2017-18 Archie F. Hay Award recipients. In the mid-1980s, the Burton County School Boards Association established the Archie F. Hay Award to honor local board members who exemplified Dr. Archie Hay's leadership in the field of education and his commitment to the children of Burton County. Dr. Hay, former Burton County superintendent, was responsible for setting up the Burton County Special Education Regions and the Special Services School District. This award is presented to Burton County School Board member who, in the opinion of impartial committee, made up of board members from outside of Burton County, best exemplifies Dr. Hay's leadership and commitment. It is, and we are very proud to announce, that the recipient for the 2017-18 Archie F. Hay Award is our very own Dr. Andrew Hay.
I want to thank this board for their support in that resolution, because I wouldn't have made it all that next step. It's a big deal for me to get received that award. In fact, when I looked up and saw the standing ovation, I started tearing up. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Congratulations. Okay, once a year, typically in October, 60 days after the release of the assessment results, we are required to make a presentation in regard to our district testing results. And here this evening, we have the awesome duo. Mr. Kevin Olmer, RGW principal, and Dominic Liata, our Director of Guidance. So, if you would please indulge us in the presentation of our testing results. Mr. Olmer?
All right. Good to see everyone again. Dominic and I are obviously happy to be here to share our test results. I think we know that the Mawa schools have a longstanding standard of excellence, and when Dominic and I present these results, certainly it's one indicator that we're meeting that standard. A little bit about the assessment program in the state, specifically last year, where students in grades three through 11 participated in the Park Assessment. In terms of data, they give us a comparison to the state, not to the surrounding towns as in past history with NJAS. And certainly, there's some different assessments that our special education students participate In terms of required assessments for last school year, we had the Park, the NJSLS Science, which was a pilot last year for our fifth grade students, eighth grade students, and 11th grade students. And the Dynamic Learning Maps is that special education assessment that is given to students with significant learning challenges. These were the Park participating states' last school year. And so, you can see that list is a little smaller than the year before. And next year, it will be even smaller, because we just recently, on the fifth, received notification from the state that New Jersey is changing the name of their assessment and the structure of their assessment, so we will no longer be part of the Park Consortium. It's going to be called the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. The times have been significantly decreased compared to the testing times that Park had. And certainly, as more information is finalized and given to us in terms of that assessment, we'll share all of the information with you. Participation rates for our students taking Park last year. So, you can see, from the first-year Park until this last year, the number of test refusals has changed increasingly, where we have, you know, we're meeting that participation rate of 95 percent at almost every grade level. Here is all grades three through eight. And then, moving on to the high school, you'll obviously see one outlier there with the 11th grade. And that is due to the graduation requirements that were put in place by the state. Our 11th grade students had an opportunity to meet that requirement in a number of different ways, with a number of different assessments. So, there were, a majority of the students were not required to participate in the assessment. And that's reflected certainly in that number. So, when we're looking at these bar graphs, what you'll see is blue is Mawa, green is the state of New Jersey, and purple is all of the states that participated in Park. The number in big, bold, black letters there is the percentage points that Mawa achieved above the state proficiency level. So, for example, in grade three, in mathematics, 80 percent of our students met or exceeded expectations. In the state, 53 percent of the students met or exceeded expectations. And cross-state, with all the states that participated in Park, 43 percent of the students met or exceeded expectations. So, you can see that consistent performance and the consistent performance above the state proficiency level in all three grades. Moving on to our middle school. Again, we continue that trend of performing above the state proficiency level. And then, onto our high school students who participate in Algebra I, Geometry, or Algebra II. There also are a number of middle school students that participate in these higher-level math assessments. So, the middle school student scores are inclusive in these results here. Data tables are showing the proficiency level at each point in terms of Park levels of performance. You have not yet meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, approaching expectations, meeting expectations, and exceeding expectations, with levels four and five considered being And while we have very high proficiency levels, I think something to note is if you look over at columns one and two, there are fairly small percentages there of students that are on those lowest levels. So, the students that aren't quite hitting the mark are certainly very close to hitting the mark there for proficiency. One thing that this state requires us to do is to report on students with IEPs, students with disabilities, and their test scores on standardized assessments. So, here's a data table that is just inclusive of our students with IEPs. And then, moving on to English Language Arts. You will see that trend continue in terms of our performance and being significantly higher than the state proficiency level at most grade levels. And then, moving on to the high school, of course, again, you see the outlier in grade 11. One, because the number of students that participated; two, because the reality is they're high school kids. And you have some kids that were taking the test that were simply clicking and submitting. And it wasn't really their best ever on the test. They knew they had met the graduation requirement. And sometimes, for a test like that, it's hard to motivate those students that are there to do their absolute best when they know they've met the requirement and they know 70 percent of their peers are not there sitting with them.
And that grade 11, that's representing 49 students in a class of 201. So, you're eliminating a huge chunk of students who have already met the graduation requirement, and an even larger chunk who were taking AP English, who are our most, our highest achieving students, who don't even have to sit for the test. So, you're basically eliminating, you know, a gigantic chunk of our 11th grade population who are our current seniors now. But you see that with the ninth and 10th graders, the students who are testing are succeeding beyond the state and the cohort states, the cross-states of Park.
So, this is our data table for English Language Arts. It's the percentage of students at each proficiency level. And again, while we have that very high achievement, also, we're looking at columns one and two and seeing that those students in the lower portion of the rating scale certainly are very minimal. Special education students' performance in the English Language Arts section. And then, moving on, we spoke, I spoke about the Dynamic Learning Maps. On one of our first slides, there's a thing, the assessment for our students with really significant challenges. So, we do not report proficiency levels for those students due to the number of students that participate, but at each grade level, you can see the number of students that participate in the Dynamic Learning Maps assessment. That is a very individualized assessment that is based off the student's IEP. So, the goals for that program are directly aligned with the goals that they have in their IEP.
Do our out-of-district placement students take those exams?
Out-of-district placement students do participate in those exams. We also have some out-of-district students that do participate in Park as well.
This is graduation rate for the last four years. So, last year's graduation rate was 95.7. Now, that number is a number of a cohort from that graduating class, but from the graduating class 2018, a 100 percent graduation rate. That's the cohort rate through the state of 95.7.
Why is it different?
Sorry?
Why is it different?
Students, based on that four-year ratio, for those kids in class of 2018, 2018 started those kids, students move out. Students drop out for certain reasons, but there's a bunch of mitigating factors that go into that graduation rate. That's our AP report. Advanced placement are college-level exams. We offered 23 AP exams, AP classes at Mawa High School. So, you see the rates for the last three years. Students can earn either a 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. If students earn to 3, 4, or 5, can submit that score to a college that the college are attending and get credit, college-level credit. So, of the students who took, 213 students take AP exams last year, 91 percent, 91 percent scored a 3, 4, or 5. So, you see, it's significantly better than the state of New Jersey. And that number of 213 students is significant. That's almost 45 percent of our population. We have 1,000 students in the building, but freshmen and sophomores, there's only a handful of sophomores who actually take AP exams. So, we're looking at a population of those juniors and seniors. So, almost 45 percent of our juniors and seniors are taking college-level classes before they leave Mawa High School. And you see the success rate that they've had. And each year, the numbers keep going up. Our teachers are teaching, making these students get to the levels that they need to be, and they're on a par. And when we look at the Parks, when we look at the Park cohort states, we're looking at five different states. The AP level exams are across the nation, and our numbers comparable, are comparable to any state.
Dominic?
Yes?
I'm sorry. Peter?
You sort of, you sort of mentioned, our AP faculty deserves a hand on this, because those tests are standardized throughout the nation, and they've done a great job here with these kids.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, they, kudos to them. And every student in Mawa High School is, if you're enrolled in an exam, if you're enrolled in an AP class, you have to take the exam. Not every school requires their students to take the exam, but it's a testament to our approach to education. And any student who enrolls in a class, you're going to see it through to the end, you're going to take the test, good, bad, or indifferent. And whether you know you need to get a 1, 3, 2, 3, 4, or 5, you're going to take that exam. But you see, our students are succeeding at that level. This is the AP scores broken down by subject from year to year. So, these are the AP exams on the left, the subject tests, the individual class. The curriculum moves at a brisk pace, because it's developed by the College Board, and all states or all schools who teach AP classes are bound by that curriculum. So, you see the numbers based on a 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5, so you see across the board, the numbers up here. If you look at this one right here, the environmental science, okay, 4.0. We don't even offer AP Environmental Science. These are kids who enrolled in the College Pepp Environmental Science class, and with a little help from the teacher and some extra studying on their own, were able to take the AP exam and get a 4.0 out of the 5. So, I mean, that's just a testament to our students. And this is that population, English literature comp. Those are the students who are 11th graders, who, I'm sorry, English language, 3.9, who were, did not take the Park, didn't have to. So, that's that population who are scoring close to 4 on the AP exam. Remaining AP scores?
We also have a growing cohort of teachers who are not only AP teachers, but they're also AP readers. So, they're sitting down to score the exam for that week-long experience, which is great also.
Do you get that understanding?
Students attending college, class 2018. So, we have 95.5 percent of our students who are attending post-secondary school, 83.8 four-year colleges and two-year colleges, 11.7. And then, the other students, the other is our students who went to military, employed, or doing career programs like Lincoln Tech and programs of that nature. And these are the colleges that our students are attending for class 2018. We have a very, it's a very talented class last year. We've got Cornell, we've got Dartmouth, we've got our first MIT in a long while. We've got Emory, University of Virginia, we got two students in last year, University of Miami, UPenn, we've got two students in from last year. So, it was a very successful year. And that's the bottom line. When we look at all these, all these test scores and all this information, the ones, the scores that are not present in tonight's presentation, SAT and ACT scores, they have not been released yet. SAT has not, College Board has not released SAT scores, and ACT has not released the ACT scores. We don't have those from last year. They're still processing the data information, which should have by the end of the month. But you see where our students wind up and how they perform at that level. And they're getting into the upper echelon schools, and they're being successful. And they're our students, and that's the one thing I always like to talk about, and when we talk about the test scores and how well academics our students do. From another aspect, we have students from Mawa High School in 23 different states across the country, which to me speaks volumes, that students are not just getting a, to that, a solid, sound education with the reading, writing, and math, but they're also developing confidence, they're developing social skills, they're developing the ability to ground to the real, into the big world and not being afraid to do it. So, that's one thing that, you know, doesn't really reflect in a lot of the test scores, is that on the end product of where our students end up.
Dominic, will you and Kevin be, we'll be placing this on our website and when you get tomorrow, and when you get the SAT and the ACT scores, can you update this presentation so we can update it to the website? Because it's a lofty, lofty page, but it's real difficult to see, so we'll have to put it up. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Liata or Mr. Olmer at all in regard to the presentation? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Li, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, yes, I do. Good evening, everybody. The first item to report on, as it happened for the past few meetings, the steam addition just across the parking lot here, some of the items that have been accomplished since our last meeting, and some of the things that are expected in the next week or so. Exterior walls are continuing to go up, and all the underground utilities that are going to be under the footprint of the building are nearing completion. The interior slab for the building, concrete slab is expected to be poured next week. We're waiting for a definitive date, and that will play, weather will play into that a little bit. Across from the cafeteria, the top coat, asphalt top coat of the parking lot has been installed there, as well as down a portion of the accessway here. That section of the project is now substantially complete, has been straightlined as well. We're currently doing final selections for the interior materials, and at our next board meeting, at our November 1st board meeting, Mr. Greg Romero, who's our onsite construction manager for the project, will be here to present to the board status of the addition so far. Another item on the agenda for tonight is health benefits. On the agenda, there's a resolution to enter into agreement with Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide health benefits to eligible district employees. The decision to leave our current provider and contract directly with Horizon, a result of a thorough analysis of our employees' current use of their benefits, market area group to some of the top providers within the state, and evaluating potential savings for both the district and the employees. Informational sessions for all staff are going to begin next week, and Horizon is scheduled to be the provider effective January 1st, 2019. The last item I wanted to bring for both the board as well as the public is that our next meeting is scheduled for November 1st. It's a little bit of an off-night for us, it is a Thursday evening. So, for those, those that attend, Thursday evening will be our next meeting on November 1st.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Barr, do you have a report for us this evening?
I don't have a report, but I just wanted to publicly say happy National Principals Month to all of our principals and the crowd.
What do I report this evening? I report on college-bound students who, commended students from Mawa High School class of 2019. So, approximately 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2019 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, commended students placed among the top 50,000 scorers of more than 1.6 million students who entered the 2019 competition by taking the 2017 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. Mr. John Pascal announced that the following students have been named commended students in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. Those students are Michael D. Constantino, Samuel B. Darrell, Fiona M. Gavin, Spencer O. Sandusky, and Joshua A. Segreya. So, congratulations to all those students. Very proud of them.
That is all that I have this evening. Do you have any board committee reports this evening? Yes, Mr. Gallo?
Just a very brief report. Shortly before this meeting this evening, we met with the district's auditors, and a final report will be released imminently.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes? Okay, thank you. Do you have any board member remarks or additional comments on any reports or other non-agenda items? Yes?
On October 2nd, Linda and I attended a meeting that was sponsored by the New Jersey School Boards Association, where they released a report on educational opportunities for the non-college-bound learner. It was a very comprehensive report. There are a lot of moving parts to making this a success. And my prediction, as an employer of those who have not attended college, I hope that we can eventually hire, I can hire a plumber, who is a high school graduate from Mawa, but it is, it's going to be a long road. In the state of New Jersey, there are currently 44,000 jobs that cannot be filled, because there, there aren't enough skilled training programs for students. Nationwide, 2 million vacancies for skilled students.
Yeah, and one of the statements I thought was a real eye-opener, they said that in 2013, almost 17,000 students who applied to county vocational technical high schools could not be accommodated, so...
This will be a developing story.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, old business. I have a motion to move on old business. Mr. Wenderkowitz, second, and Ms. Conica.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Saco?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conica?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes. Now, I have new business. I'd like to take A through R. May I have a motion to proceed? Mr. Wenderkowitz, second, by Mr. Gallo. Any board member comments, questions, concerns, or thoughts on these items?
No texts, please.
Okay, good to go. Could you please take roll call?
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Saco?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conica?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes. Then, we have new business personnel, 16A through L. May I have a motion to proceed on that? Mr. Kizmarski, second, by Mr. Gallo. Any board member remarks, comments on any of these items? I'd just like to say thank you to all the volunteers. We have a lot of volunteers listed on our agenda this evening, so thank you to all the parents and everyone else who are volunteers for our schools. You would greatly appreciate it. All right, could you please take roll call?
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Saco?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conica?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Now, public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes.
Jen Park, sixth of Vine Drive. I'm here, I did speak with, I'm just going to talk right this little bit, there we go. I was here at the previous Board of Ed meeting, where I brought to the attention of the new limited checkout of books from the libraries in the K-5 schools. Just to recap, in case, you know, just to remind you, currently, in the K-3 schools, students only are limited to check books out once every other week, and in the 4-5 school, they are only allowed to check books out once every three weeks. So, during the previous meeting, when I had brought this to the attention of the board, I know Dr. Shawan, you had said that you would also speak with Dr. DiTuro and get together. Since then, I just wanted to simply update everyone on the development as what I've been doing. I met with Dr. DiTuro yesterday, as well as Ms. DeTeau and Ms. DeVito, where we further discussed the issue of limited checkout of books. So, there's a number of concerns with this for anyone who did not watch the Board of Ed meeting from the previous, from the previous meeting. Classroom collections simply aren't enough. We want students to be able to have that independence to check out books. I'm sorry, I am an academic librarian, I serve on the faculty at a four-year institution about 40 miles from here. So, not only is this a parental concern, but it's also a professional concern of mine. My concern moving forward is how are students going to be interacting with research and resources in their libraries? Librarians in the library profession, so we generally have master's degrees in library information science. We abide by a library full of rights, which I'm sure not too many people are aware of. I would not expect you to be. I have printed them out for you. So, whereas our students are not having access to the collection as they have previously, beyond that, our librarians are being told to not allow books to circulate outside of the library when it's not a book checkout week. This is poor practice in the library world. I know that there are reasons standing behind it. I've met with Dr. DiTuro, as I stated. I know the standards, that the library collections in the classrooms are improving and increasing and being more wide-ranging. However, there are barriers that as librarians... However, there are barriers that, as librarians, we do not want our students, our children, to be faced with. Saying no over and over again for those willing readers is, I don't want to know what it's going to mean in five, 10 years from now, when they feel that they cannot go to a library and ask for assistance. So on the front page, I do have a library bill of rights. So, and of course, we're librarians, so we like to provide an interpretation of those bill of rights. And I do have, on that second page, this is that interpretation. It relates directly to school libraries. And I have gone ahead and highlighted the point that I would like to make this evening. Major barriers between students and resources include, but are not limited to, establishing restricted shelves or closed collections. That's exactly what is happening now and it's incredibly concerning, again, from a parent point of view, as well as from a professional. I can't imagine having my student be told no, my child being told no, and all he wants to do is check out a book, and that's what is happening. Beyond that, we can see our students love to read. I mean, our collections are vast. They are so welcoming and enticing when they come into the library. And to say to them, no, you can't check out that book, you can't learn about that particular subject. My son has great resources in the classroom. He's in second grade. He's taking books out right now about Halloween and that's fantastic, but during his library time, he wants to explore other areas of interest, sports and so on and so forth. And I know the Mawa Public Library is excellent, but I can't always get there. He's seven, he can't walk there on his own. You know, having a school library is really his outlet for learning about different cultures and different initiatives in the world and what's happening. Beyond that, of course, I, on Twitter...
I just want to let you know that there are probably other people that want to get up to speak, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, I will conclude.
I apologize. Thank you very much.
There is a recent post about third graders being so excited about their Promethean boards to write down some of their hopes and dreams for a library in this school year. If you read those comments, there's so many about being excited and willing readers, and they're going to be told to no when they want to check out those books. And that's greatly concerning. So thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is August Hoffman. I live at 2350 Pembroke Court. I also have a second grader and to say concern, to say that we're concerned as families, as parents, is an understatement. I sat up here tonight, I sat here tonight, I listened to this presentation about our testing and how great Mawa does and we're above the national grid and we're above the other states. And for us to sit here and limit our children at such an early age, and when it comes to learning, reading, writing, I don't know how those test scores are going to fare in, like Jen said, five, 10, 15 years. So I'm not going to be as loquacious as she was. I was just posing a question is, how do we find it okay? And how is it feasible for us to understand as parents that this initiative to limit us allowing our, you guys allowing our children to take books out of the library weekly is okay? I just, I missed the last meeting. I'm just interested in finding, I'm also, I'm a high school English teacher. I've taught world literature for the last 10 years. I see seniors, I know we talked about juniors and their juniors and X, Y, and Z, but when our kids are writing essays as they text message and we're limiting their right to take out books at an early age, I find it overly alarming. So I just would like to know why that happened and what are we going to do to change it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tricia Dubois. I live at 3509 Woodyer Court. I am also the mother of two second graders, Metlinapi Meadows. I spoke last time, my major concern really is that our children are hijacked by me, the media. My children came home and they said in library, they just took a Microsoft quiz to see how much they know about it during their last library class. So I just went through the schedule to see, every other week, they go to libraries. So my son went on September 28th, he took out two books. He loved the first one, finished it in 24 hours. This is his book that he read. This is what he brings home in the book sacks. Just spoke to Mrs. DeTeau today, we don't really know where his book sacks are because they're not coming home anymore. He doesn't really want to read these books, he's interested in these books. So the second book he picked out was a bomb, so within five days, he decided he did not want to read it. So my child has been sitting since October 3rd without a book of interest to him. Yes, I can go to the library, but as you know, you know, I work on ladies' night out, I, my kids have Cub Scouts, they have a billion things to do. So on October 5th, they took the Microsoft assessment. October 12th, which is Friday, they can take books out. And again, so November 9th, they, he has time to take out books. Well, they, we have no school because that's a teachers convention. Okay, so the week, next week, no books. November 23rd, Thanksgiving, no books again. So my child can next take out books after Septa, or October 12th, on December 7th, and then again on the 21st. So how does this work? Because he's not bringing this home in his book sack. He wants to read these books. And it's really unacceptable. I couldn't care less how much my kids know about the computer. I took my laptop, their tablets away from them. They were doing cool math. I looked at that, that's a video game. All of our, all of our programs, our kids are inundated with media. A second grader does not need to be looking at the laptop on a daily basis. I want my kids to read, and I am a school psychologist, by the way. I'm also an educator in New York State. And this is just unacceptable for elementary school kids. And if my kids are only going once every other week at JK, when they go there in two years, they can take books out every three weeks, well, let's hope you're not sick on one of those days because, hey kid, you can't read a book for six weeks, you can't take it out. It's insane. This is absolutely insane. I don't know who thought this process out, but this is not acceptable. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Matthew Park, 6 Divine Drive. In addition to being a parent, I am a high school teacher as well as a historian. At the last board meeting, I said this and apparently I do have to repeat it because I'm not sure that it's being heard, but it is unacceptable for a child to want to check out a book, to be in good standing with the library, and to be denied the right to check out a book. That discourages the child. We are fighting against illiteracy. We are fighting for our children to want to check these books out. It's a struggle. Many parents are going through this struggle. When we actually get them to go to the library and they're denied a book, it seems like the school is on the other side of the fight, that they are fighting against us. It is unacceptable for a child to be denied the right to check out a book. It sends the wrong message, it discourages them, it teaches them all of the wrong lessons. And really, what I find most disturbing is that there's been no actual explanation for why this must be so. Why must it be that children are denied the right to check out books every other week? Or in the case of one school, once every three weeks? Why? It really is disturbing to me that no clear, straightforward answer has been given to this question. What have we heard so far? We've heard something about 21st century skills, as if that somehow is an explanation for why children should be denied the right to check out books. 21st century skills doesn't mean anything, it's a catchphrase. It's what a politician says when they don't want to admit to what's really going on. And I want to know what's really going on, and I think a lot of people do. And I'm really disturbed that no honest, straightforward, clear answers are being given for why any child should be denied the right to check out a book, as long as they are in good standing with the library, they don't have overdue fees, that kind of thing. I cannot for the life of me understand this policy and I'm disturbed that no straightforward, clear answers are coming forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brooke Gazlo, 552 Anaron Dev Court. So last week, I spoke on the K-5 schools, but what wasn't touched on was Ramapo Ridge and what's also going on there. So the library supervisor, Mrs. DeVito, as far as I know, has no library experience and does not realize how much time and effort...
Excuse me. I prefer that you did not speak in regard to one of our staff members.
Well, she's a technology person.
She is, and I would be more than happy to meet with you privately in regard to one of our staff members and what their skills and abilities are.
Okay, well then, that's fine. And I will speak to you then regarding that. But Mrs. Matulovic spends many hours building quality books, orders for free reading, as well as to support class research projects. Sorry, I just got a call. This would not change if they, if there were digital books. It takes time analyzing the collection and the curriculum, reading book reviews and making appropriate selections. A library is an investment and our tax dollars were invested in these resources for our children. Mrs. Matulovic is a highly qualified librarian and obtained her master's...
Once again, Mrs. Gazlo, once again, I, I'm sorry.
It speaks to her qualifications that are not being used because she is now being sent, because you didn't let me get to my point yet, that she is now...
Mrs. Gazlo, I've been very respectful.
That's fine. And I am also being respectful, but you're cutting me off because you're not letting me get to my point.
Okay, could you please get to your point?
Yes, that she is not being allowed in the library except for her one period.
So what is your point? Do you want her to be there more often?
She should be there more often. She's not allowed to work the library as her job. She's teaching classes and allowed there one period.
Okay.
How is she supposed to work the library and keep it up and running? And how are children allowed to be in the library to be able to use that as a resource?
Thank you.
I understand where you're saying in the comparison of the two.
Okay, I'm sure.
Mary Upton, 15 Whispering Climes Drive. I am also a parent of a second grader who this Monday was supposed to have library and she ferociously read the three books that she was allowed to take out two weeks ago that were 60-plus pages. She did that in basically the first week. So coming as a parent, and one of the things that concerns me is, this was not disseminated through the district. This was, I saw this on Facebook. And then I asked my daughter, oh, by the way, when do you take out books? So we took out books and then in two weeks, we could take out books. So if this is how it's going to be, number one, has there been any, any research then? I have a background in psychology and am very research-driven. So from the standpoint of the district, what are you doing other than saying, okay, we need to do this and, you know, meet whatever guidelines there are? But from the standpoint of us as parents, how, how does the district not even notify us so that I know, okay, every two weeks, I have to remind them, make sure your books are in your backpack? Or every three weeks, whatever it is for the, for the school? If we're not being notified as parents and as caregivers for our children, what's going on? We have nothing other than, you know, leaving up the responsibility to K-3 to tell their parents what's going on in school. Most of you guys are parents. Are they responsible enough to, you know, tell you? This is what we have going on. So as, as a, as a parent and as someone who, she is, she loves reading, and this year was a pivotal moment for her, that it's already being cut off because I couldn't tell you when the next time she's going to be able to take out books. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay. If we can, is it possible, Dr. DiTuro, there are a number of points that were brought up. If you could perhaps stand and address some of those, and if you could start off with notification, please.
I'll start with notification, but then there's a lot of questions, so I think it's best, and I apologize for whoever was here last week, for me to really get into detail about the process. So, notification, everyone was sent home a letter in the beginning of the year. In that letter, it stated the change in the circulation cycle. It also talked about, someone brought up, and I apologize, I didn't get the name, someone brought up the issue, which is a valid issue, of if there is a day off, or if there's a snow day, or things like that. And they said that the library is going to make accommodations to address that situation. So I hope people understand that. If by chance you're caught on a day, whether it's a Monday or a Friday, whatever the days are that are popular days off, your child will not go four, five, six, seven weeks without circulation. So, let me go into, Ms. Park and I spoke at length about this, not only just last week, but yesterday, like Ms. Park said. But out of respect of everyone, let me give you up and let me take the opportunity to tell you exactly what happened. Last year, a large number of teachers came together, media specialists included, administrators. And what we did was, we took a look at a number of different things. One of the things that we looked at were standards that we're obligated to teach throughout the year. Those standards have technology skills embedded in them. When we looked at those skills, we tried to look at where would they be applicable for our teachers to teach and where would they be housed as it pertains to subject matter. We all decided as a collective group that the perfect person to expose our students to those standards, as a point person purely exposure, is our media specialist. With that, they will partner with all of the teachers across the school to handle those expectations and deliver that instruction. No one teacher is responsible for teaching technology standards. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear on that matter. That being said, let me take a step back and talk about our media center. Because I think what we're talking about is, we're talking about the book part of our media center, but there's a lot more than just books in our media center. And I say just books because our media center is a place that you come to to experience a lot of different things, books being one of them. But if, just to kind of talk about what students do in the media center, I think that was another question. What do they do once they get to the media center? Looking at the curriculum in our K-5 grade levels. Our curriculum mirrors what happens in our language arts classrooms. So when you look at it, there's a genre appreciation, there's reading comprehension skills, there's book search, there's library orientation, there's a number of different things that they do in the media center that they also do in our language arts classroom. That being said, when you look at what a rich media center experience is, there's the book piece, there's the technology piece, there's the collaboration piece, there's a number of different things that happen there that we're very, very proud of. Couple of our media specialists are looking at their libraries and they're trying to recreate that space to make it that welcoming place that Ms. Park talks about. She talked last week about this serendipity feeling that you get when you walk into a library. We're hoping that there's other things besides that, that book search and that book selection that gives them that feeling. We talked, I think Dr. Shum talked about Makerspace. That's a big push that we also have at the K-12 level, but especially at the K-5 level, that we're really committed to having our students take part in. Makerspace is something that the kids come together, they're given a challenge, has nothing to do with technology. There's no computers at the K-5 level when you're looking at Makerspace. As you get older, computers and other technology resources are brought into place. But at the K-5 level, they're given a task, they're asked to unpack that problem and look for possible solutions. So in the media center, that is a place, one of the places, that they can take on those experiences. So I said it last week, and I'll say it again this week. When you're talking about distribution and you're talking about denying kids books, just because we reallocated the time of distribution in the library, doesn't mean they don't have access throughout the entire school. The library is not the sole provider of books in an elementary school. It's a rich place, or it's a, it's a rich experience for them, but in our reading curriculum, they're exposed to hundreds of books as well, as a supplement, not as a primary. I think there was confusion last time when I said that our classroom libraries are diverse, there are hundreds of books, there are a lot, they span all the different genres, all the different reading levels. And I felt like people took it away that they have to just use... And I felt like people took it away that they have to just use that place. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, when they take their three books out in the library, media center, and they, they go through those books in, in such a fast pace, which I love, and they need more books, our classroom library is there as well. And when they take all those books and they read through those, they can go back to the classroom library, which means in a two-week cycle, our kids can be going through seven, eight, nine books at a time. So, if anything, our district is on the other side of denying books. We're on the other side of not being partners with, I think we were talking about the literacy, um, people who are fighting the, the, the fact that people are battling and struggling with not being able to read. That, that's not the case at all. If anything, we feel as though we're trying to create a comprehensive experience, including reading, including technology, including co, uh, collaboration and all the critical thinking skills that go along with having a rich elementary school experience.
It's, it's up to you guys.
Okay, well, we'll entertain if there are questions from a teacher, Dr. Detero.
I guess the, the biggest question I had, Dr. is.
Could you please, could you please?
I apologize, excuse me, my misrespect. I'm more concerned with the message. You've taught, you have kids?
I do.
Um, I taught, I coach, I have children. It's the message that I think is being sent. You're going to a place that contains books. You're going to the media center, right? So, they're being told, or they're being, they're pushed in a direction of, oh, there's other things, and absolutely, we're completely agree that that's necessary. But the foundation of learning is reading.
Correct.
Okay? And the message is, well, this week, you're not going to do that. This week, you're going to do this. How do we expect them down the road to then say, well, you know, like, I can do this instead of that? But when you need to learn how to read and write effectively and be able to get a point across, looking at the iPad or the, that, that's not going to cut it.
I agree with you, and, and let me answer that point. I feel as though, when you go into a classroom, there are a number of different experiences that you're, you're going to have. And just because in that one week, they're not, uh, scheduled, I'm not, I'm, I'm not even going to say denied, they're not scheduled to take out books, doesn't mean that the message goes that I'm not allowed to have books. Kind of like if I go into a math class and my teacher's teaching multiplication today. And there's a child who says, I really want to do addition. Well, today, we're doing multiplication. We're going to get to addition at another time, and we will get to that, but today we're doing something different. And I feel as though that, for me, won't stifle their love for reading. That, for me, will explain to them, there are a lot of different things that we have in a school experience, and I have conf, confidence and comfort knowing that my language arts teachers as well are, they're partnering with me. And I'm going to go back to it, reading's not taught in isolation. Reading's not taught just in the media center. Reading is taught in the media center, is taught in the language arts class, is taught in the science class, is taught in the social studies class, is taught across the, across the curriculum. And there's not one specific place or moment that's going to create that feeling for a child to say, no, you're done with books. I do understand what you're saying and a lot, and, and I've talked to a number of parents about that, and I really hope you understand that. There, there's more to that moment in telling a child, now is not the time, but there will be many times that you're going to have that experience. If, now, if by chance I say, there is no more circulation, I understand that point. If I say, there's no more library time, I completely understand that point. And Ms. Park and I had a long conversation about my, my passion for reading, my appreciation for the media center, and my understanding of, there is a, a, a rich experience that is housed in that time.
So, since you understand, I'm sorry. I'm married to him, so I can't. So I actually, just for the record, I don't actually completely disagree with Dr. Detero. I think he's brought up.
Thank you.
Um, I think he's brought up a number of very accurate points and I completely support them. My true concern is, and your analogy was fantastic with the, with learning math and, you know, we're working on addition and subtraction this week. But they're not spending that time in the library sitting and reading. They're taking these books out to bring them home, um, to support their literacy skills in the home. It's not taking time, now, I, sometime guests would be taken out of the classroom, right? You need some time to locate those books. Um, but it's for that home, um, to bring those books home and to read them at home. So it's not exactly the same analogy in that respect. So that's where I'm concerned. They were saying no to them checking books out. No, no, no. Um, and maybe you could speak to that a bit more, or not.
I also would just like to comment here that we're talking respectfully, I understand what you're saying. I was listening. I respect that, understand what you're saying, but these are seven, my, my kids are seven years old. They were quite furious that they had to take the Microsoft quiz. They were like, and I did not tell them, I don't go home and tell my kids, but they came home, they were upset. They couldn't get new books. They're elementarys kids, they're little kids. And that's what they want to do. And they loved reading those books. They were done. They want new ones. They don't want the ones in the classroom. I'm sorry, I know you have hundreds in there. And, and I don't think I'm any different than most parents. Most of us are like, like, you need to read this, you need to read this every night. They, they don't want to read that. They're interested in Stick Dog and Erie Elementary and not, you know, Lowell Williams anymore. You know, so I just wanted to disagree with you from their perspective.
And I appreciate that. And let me kind of talk about how the classroom libraries are built too. To kind of speak to the selection in the library compared to the selection in the classroom. And I'll speak to my history. So I'll talk about Joyce Kilmer. Seven years ago, there was a commitment from the district to build those classroom libraries. When we built those classroom libraries, I worked hand-in-hand with Robin Kennedy, who was a media specialist at the time. During that time, she utilized all the listservs that the librarians in Bergen County, in New Jersey, in the country use. And in that listserv, what they do is, they get the, the popular titles and the, the things that in all libraries, in your circulation rate, they're the most, most, um, checked-out books, yeah, on a weekly basis. And what they do is, they go through all the reviews and all the different things that really reinforce the decision that those are the books that you should be buying. The same vetting process that they do in the libraries in the school. So please understand that the libraries that they have in the classroom, and again, I'm going to, I, I, I can't say this enough, I'm not saying that they're replacing the school libraries, but the libraries in the classroom are constantly assessed, are constantly updated, and there's a commitment from the district to put money into both places. We are not taking money out of one to put into the other. Because that was, I thought, I think brought up last, uh, last week or in one, in our, in our meeting, that what's going to happen to the media center? Nothing is happening to the media center. We are not phasing out any part of that place or that position. Because last week, there was a question about, are you, are you taking away that position? That is not even being discussed. So I want there to be a clear message of why the district is going in that direction. I want there to be a clear understanding of the value that we feel that that place brings to our school. We also want everyone to understand that it does not happen in isolation, and there's a comprehensive approach to literacy, appreciation of literacy, and growing our readers across the board to talk about the scores.
I have a question. How many periods out of the day is the librarian actually in the library at Ramapo Ridge and JK?
I don't, I couldn't even tell you about that schedule. Ms. Lockhart.
You can't tell me that they're in there?
Would you please stand up?
Yes.
Ms. Lockhart, I don't have their schedule on me right now. So what I can do is, I think you should probably reach out to the principals and ask about that, but I don't have that schedule in front of me. I, to be honest with you, I was sitting in the back and they asked me to talk. I don't have that kind of information.
So there are, um, computers in the libraries?
There are.
At Ramapo Ridge and Joyce Kilmer?
Correct.
Are the librarians teaching the classes using those computers? Are they accessible in the library during that time or no?
Are the librarians using the computers in the library as a teaching tool?
Yes.
I would say the answer is yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have one last question.
I can sit down if you'd like me to sit down.
This is the last question.
Um, so it, it's nice to hear you talk about your, your passion for reading and, you know, that we don't want to be on the side of denying books. Um, but unfortunately, that doesn't fit with the reality. And the reality is, kids are being denied books. They are. That is objective reality. It's what's actually happening. Kids are trying to, I know of several parents whose children have tried to check out books and have been denied. So, you can't kind of theoretically talk about love of reading and we don't want to be on the side of denying books, and then what's actually happening in reality is kids are being denied books. Uh, number two, standards. Um, I'm a K through 12 educator. Um, I work with standards all the time, technology standards, all kinds of standards. There are lots of creative ways that you can accomplish your technology standards without denying students, without denying children the right to check out books every week. There's no standard for not checking out books. There's no reason why our students cannot both be proficient in technology and check out books every single week. So again, what I'm hearing is a lot of theory, a lot of theoretical talk, and the reality, unfortunately, is that students, that children are being denied books. Um, and that what I'm hearing talked about is not actually what's happening.
That was more of a statement than a question.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
So this was a thorough process that our administration, our staff have gone through, and the board's well aware of what it took going to put this program into place, put this procedure, this change into place. And Dr. Detero, um, so generously, has given a thorough examination, or explanation of this decision, which was a thoughtful one, to change the number of times students can take out a book. But at this point in time, um, the board, we are going to continue, and this district is going to continue with the schedule in place, and assess this change to, to schedule as would, we would with any other program change. So currently, this is the way it's going to remain. We will assess it on an ongoing basis. If it needs to be changed, it will be changed. And we have a great partner in the Mawa Public Library, and everyone is welcome to go there because libraries are really, really lacking in people going to the library, so. Thank you all very much for your thoughtful input. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Conca. Meeting adjourned.